Good afternoon, everybody. Today is January 29th, 2024. The council briefing meeting will come to order. The time is 2:02 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rivera?
Present.
Councilmember Saka?
Here.
Councilmember Strauss?
Present.
Councilmember Wu?
Present.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Present.
Councilmember Kettle?
Present.
Councilmember Moore?
Present.
Councilmember Morales?
Here.
Council President Nelson?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you very much. If there's no objection, the minutes of January 22nd, 2024 will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the minutes are adopted. All right, moving on to my president's report. At tomorrow's full council meeting, there are only three items, so it's going to be a fairly brief agenda. The three items are all appointments to Seattle City Light's review panel, a nine-member body that evaluates City Light's strategic plan. These council appointments were previously referred to the former Economic Development, Technology and City Light Committee, which I chaired. And they were, that was late last year that they were referred, but the committee didn't have any other committee meetings scheduled in December. So I brought these appointments before full council rather than send them to the new Sustainability City Light Arts and Culture Committee, which Councilmember Wu chairs. Welcome for two reasons. Number one, the committee which now has a chair won't be holding its first meeting until February, I think it's 16th. A vote now allows these appointees who already have been joining review panel meetings as observers to officially take part in panel business without further delay. And then also, the second reason is that City Light and my office vetted all three appointees out of one of whom already serves on the panel and is moving laterally to a different seat. And we agree that they are all very highly qualified. So tomorrow, when this comes up in the agenda, I'll provide specific information about each appointee. And I'll also be asking to suspend the rules so that City Light staff can give a very brief overview of what is this review panel, what is its role. So you'll get a little bit more information. Normally, we don't have department staff presenting at full council meetings, but this is, I asked out of deference to the fact that most of my colleagues don't know what the review panel actually does, and you'll be voting on some members. So in the meantime, you can look at the appointment packets, which are attached to the agenda, where they will, you'll find their resumes if you want to learn anything more about them before the meeting tomorrow. And you can also reach out to Eric McConaughey of Central Staff or Mara Bruegger from the City Light office if you have any questions. All right, that's my president's report. Now, we're going to move on to the highlight of today's agenda, the state legislative session update. So go ahead and come on up. So OIR distributed a bulletin of the bills they'll cover today and their presentation this morning, and both will be available to the public on the agenda after the meeting. Again, these briefings are for council members to weigh in on live bills and flag legislation that they would like OIR staff to focus on. Director Tarleton, welcome. Go ahead and take it away.
Thank you, Council President Nelson. Members of the council, welcome to Councilmember Wu. Pleased to meet you and look forward to briefing you. I am thrilled that we are now at week, starting week four. We've been three weeks into session. And Samir Janajo and Anna Johnson will give you an update on what happened last week, and that's one of the materials that were handed out to you, and a preview of what we expect this week. It's always a fun week in Olympia in a short session because this week will be the week that bills either get voted out of their policy committees and into the Rules Committee or they don't. And so we should see a shortening of the list of bills that are still in the city tracker by your presentation next week. But I'm going to turn it over to Samir and Anna. We have tried to adapt to some of your requests as well as the bills that you have expressed interest in. And we continue to want to have this evolve so that, as Council President Nelson has asked, that you become more aware of the positions the city is taking on bills that are in front of committees. And this is a good pause moment because we won't have to track a lot of bills that are no longer in action, right? That by next, by this Wednesday, we'll have a much better sense of which bills are still in contention for being moved into the other chamber. So I'm going to turn it over, I think, to Samir is going to kick off the presentation. Samir.
Hi, I'm Samir Janajo, State Relations Director at OIR. And yeah, this is, we're going into week four of the legislative session. As both mentioned before, Wednesday is the policy cutoff, so all bills should have had a hearing by this Wednesday in order for them to move on. And then they, then it'll come to fiscal committees. The bills that have a fiscal impact will have to go through an additional committee. And the deadline for that is the following Monday. So that would mean that the next opportunity to chime in and hearings would be when the bills that move off the floor and go to the opposite chamber, when they have their hearings again in the opposite chamber, and that will be in mid-February. So you'll want to just stay tuned for those bills to see what makes it off the floor and then see what then gets scheduled in the opposite chamber, and then that'll be a great opportunity to testify on those. Today's presentation will be kind of a run-through of last week. All these are, these are bills that all of these bills were heard, had hearings in the last week. And so we'll focus on those and go through and also note where the, kind of where, if the city chimed in on these bills. So I'll start with the budget and revenue. So last week, there was a hearing on House Bill 2219, which established the sales tax exemption for affordable housing construction. This is a bill that the city signed in support of. This is only on the state sales tax. And there's also a Senate Bill 6249, which is a state property tax exemption for, what is it stated there, the greater 100,000 or 60% of the county median home value. This is on the state property tax. It would be eligible, anyone would be eligible. It'd also require a constitutional amendment to be, and that would require vote of the people. House Bill 2348 is known as, is a bill specifically for Harborview Hospital. So it helps hospitals that are, that are owned by counties like Harborview. Essentially, in order to be able to ensure that their financing is up to par and that it helps their long-term financing aspect, it was requested by Harborview Hospital and requested by King County, and the city signed in support of that bill.
Hi, everyone. Anna here, state legislative liaison in OIR. You'll see on the slide, there was a number of climate and environment bills. We supported all of these the city signed in support or testified on. I'll go one by one here. So Senate Bill 5973, this bill essentially prohibits common interest communities or HOAs from adopting restrictions that prohibit installation or use of heat pumps by unit owners. House Bill 2401 creates a stewardship program for refrigerants or pre-charged appliances that the Department of Ecology has to manage. So this is like HFCs, a program to help steward those in our waste stream. And then Senate Bill 6180 and House Bill 2301 is, has to do with essentially our organic material management systems or composting. So this bill does a number of things. It updates kind of some of the requirements, the bin processes, and also bans the stickers on produce that is non-compostable. Senate Bill 5265, this is one where a subject matter expert from City Light testified on. This bill essentially creates consumer protections from those who want to install solar on either their home or their business, and it sets requirements for solar installers and license them and creates protections under the Consumer Protection Act. Senate Bill 52, or 6276 is the Right to Repair Act. This requires manufacturers of digital electronic products to allow independent repair options for parts or tools and essentially helps those who have digital products be able to keep them longer and keeps them out of the waste stream. And we are supportive of that one as well.
We can general government, Senate Bill 6231. It relates to prohibiting cities from constructing what is known as hostile architecture, which is our, which is architecture that's meant to restrict the use of space by people experiencing homelessness. Senate Bill 5993 is a request bill from the Secretary of State's office related to voter education when a city changes their voting method, like the city, like Seattle has, to rank choice voting. The city signed in as other primarily because the bill allows a cause of action, a private right of action to allow any voter to essentially file a suit against the city and is quite, and it's undefined in terms of financial damages. House Bill 2250 also relates to ranked choice voting. This essentially standardizes ranked choice voting across the state and establishes statewide protocols and statewide requirements for the ballot design and vote tabulation. Moving to healthcare and behavioral health.
Samir, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So can you go back to that other page? Did you, I, thank you very much for identifying what the city's position is, if we, if we have one, that's helpful. And are you thinking that the other bills that you're mentioning do have a really good chance of getting through?
So all the bills that were mentioning are, had a hearing, so they're certainly, and they're still alive. So I would say they all have a chance.
Got it. So they're, thank you very much. Thanks.
Just, Council President, just to follow up on that regarding Senate Bill 6231, are you, where is that one located and in terms of, you know, city support or any, you know, positions on that bill?
Yeah, we didn't, we did take a position on that bill.
Okay, thank you.
So moving to healthcare, healthcare and behavioral health, number of bills related to substance use disorder. The first one on your list there, Senate Bill 6228 is, has got quite a few provisions, some of which relate to insurance. So one of the main one being requiring health insurance to authorize up to 28 days of inpatient treatment before they, before they introduce any prior authorization. And also requires insurance companies to cover ambulance transportation from, to and from behavioral health providers and also when the person is discharged from, discharged from a behavioral health facility. And that also includes a number of workforce provisions, ensuring that the behavioral health workforce, addressing workforce shortages. And Senate Bill, Senate, or House Bill 2247 also relates to a number of behavioral health workforce shortages, does a number of things, changing the licensing fees, practice setting, continuing education requirements. Also, one of the things it does is it creates a new, a new credential for a psychological associate, someone who is not yet a psychologist but is studying to be one and allowing them to work. House Bill 2469 is, relates to the involuntary treatment act, also does a number of things to, to allow better use facilitation of involuntary treatment act. One of those things, one of the most significant is that expands who could petition a court when a, doesn't need a crisis responder, has deemed a person, has said not to take someone into ITA detention. So it would now expand that for a family member, currently a family member can appeal that to a court, but this would mean also human service providers could do that, other healthcare providers could also petition to a court to take someone into involuntary treatment act detention. And the city signed in support of all of these bills. On housing and homelessness, there's a House Bill and a Senate Bill, House Bill 2308 and Senate Bill 6175, that both relate to conversion of commercial buildings to residential buildings. It authorizes cities to establish a property tax exemption program for those conversions. And then House Bill 2252 requires cities to allow neighborhood cafes that meet certain requirements to be permitted in residential zones. And then House Bill 2270 essentially creates a pathway to create a new department of housing. It would take from, the housing program from the Department of Commerce and into a new, a new department. And labor and commerce, there's like, there's two bills that were heard last week that relate to THC content. The first one, Senate Bill 6220, increases the minimum legal age of cannabis products with a THC concentration greater than 35% to be 25. And then Senate Bill 6271 requires LCB to conduct a study with the end result being creating a new taxation system that is based on the THC concentration rather than the flat 37% that is in law right now.
Is that designed to be revenue neutral?
It is, yeah. House Bill 2362 would create a new endorsement for breweries and wineries to allow off-site and pop-up retail sales for on-premise and off-premise consumption. The city signed in support to that bill. And then last one is House Bill 2266 requires LNI to adopt rules for the construction industry that require employers to provide reasonable accommodations for employees who menstruate or express milk. And the city signed in support of that bill as well.
In the topic of public safety and criminal justice, Senate Bill 6009 prohibits peace officers from hogtying a person or assisting in putting a person into a hogtie. The city signed in support of this policy. Senate Bill 6242 also had a hearing last week, and this bill essentially removes the requirement for local government to reimburse for 25% of the costs for law enforcement training at the CJTC. It removes that requirement, and we are supportive of that. House Bill 2311, this bill is essentially creating an officer wellness program, so the CJTC will have to develop a peer support program, council training program, administer a grant program to help with peer support counseling programs for local law enforcement. House Bill 2088 extends liability protections for responders that are dispatched for, from mobile rapid response crisis teams and community-based response, community-based crisis teams. The city testified in support of this, the care department specifically, and this would really help essentially create liability protection for the behavioral health or mental health professionals that are getting dispatched from, for their calls. Senate Bill 6157 allows DACA recipients to apply for civil service positions such as city firefighters, city police, fish and wildlife officers, peace and corrections officers, and positions within the sheriff offices, office, and the city signed in support of this one. Under social programs and education, the first two bills here essentially have to do with guaranteed free access to community or technical college. So House Bill 2309 provides the state, subsidizes essentially the first 45 credits of community or technical college for students regardless of their income. And then House Bill 2374 essentially does the same thing for up to 90, 90 credits of community or technical college. Senate Bill 63, 6300 essentially makes the enrollment in the Washington College Grant more streamlined, so if students are already under Washington's Basic Food Program or the Food Assistance Program or Apple Helping Kids are automatically deemed qualified for the financial aid for the Washington College program. House Bill 2368 requires that Department of Social and Human Services coordinates between state, federal, and local efforts to support economic and social integration of immigrants and refugees who arrive and resettle in Washington. It authorizes DSHS to administer services to those immigrants who are ineligible for federal-funded services. And then finally here, Senate Bill 6216 directs OSPI to provide state-level coordination to help schools better identify and connect students to behavioral health supports, and it establishes regional school-based mental and behavioral health student assistance program through the education service districts throughout the state. So all of these bills, the city signed in support of. So looking ahead to next week, I won't go through all the bills here, but as Samir mentioned, today, tomorrow, and Wednesday are the last days, policy bills can be heard in their policy committees, and then Wednesday is the deadline for them to get voted out of committee. So here are just some of the bills that are coming up next week. Some of them are already in the fiscal committees or even all the way in the other chamber, and then we'll see for the rest of this week and then even into the weekend, a lot of fiscal hearings will be occurring. And as Samir mentioned, next Monday is the fiscal committee cutoff. And that's it, so we can take any questions if there are any.
Council President, we know that this is a deluge, okay? And I'm, I'm sure that any number of these pieces of legislation will move forward, okay? We are, we are prepared for that. If you have specific questions about the state of a bill, where it's moving in the next week or two, please make sure you contact Samir, Anna, or me, and we will give you as up-to-date information as we can. The, the process that a bill, once it gets out of committee, it has to go to a Rules Committee, it has to be pulled out of Rules and put on a floor calendar, it has to be on a floor calendar if it's going to have a potential for getting a vote off the floor of the House or the Senate. And, and that process can happen in a moment or it can take days and days. And so any number of these pieces of legislation, they could show up on a Senate hearing or a House hearing between now and February 12th, okay? There will be a lot of floor action in both chambers over the next couple of weeks. So things will happen, but there is always an opportunity to send a letter, to ask questions, to understand what amendments might be attached to these pieces of legislation as they are voted off the floor. That is very common. And so the city's indication of support in a committee hearing may or may not continue forward depending on whether a piece of legislation is amended to adopt another perspective, okay? So we'd like to keep you apprised of those kinds of potential changes too that could affect the city's continuing position to support and your position to support or to oppose. So we are always prepared to take questions. We are aware of your time schedule, Council President, so you let us know if there is time to take questions today.
There is time to take questions today. I see a couple of people's hands up. I also wanted to note that you're very busy down there, and so it's, it's hard to keep nine people abreast of the twists and turns of legislation. So if there's a way that we can facilitate that process, the better. I mean, it'd be great if there was a little ping or app or something like that, or maybe there is, and you can just plug in a number and then it tells you when something's happening. But in any case, we want to work with you to make it efficient on both sides.
Thank you.
So I don't, I did not see whose hand was up first, Councilmember Strauss or Kettle?
Did Councilmember Moore want to, did you have something? You're fine. I just wanted to say, Director Tarleton, your team was very accessible to me last week as I was working with Association of Washington Cities. Colleagues, Councilmember Morales and I sit on the Board of Association of Washington Cities. I have a subcommittee role on the Legislative Committee within AWC. So every other week, I'm meeting with Association of Washington Cities on their legislative agenda, which is different than ours, to under, but there's a lot of overlap.
Yeah, there is this year.
And so it's always my goal to bring our agenda in line with theirs and their agenda in line with ours. Granted, AWC has 281 or six cities and towns statewide, so there's always some tension there. I was, and so I wanted to sign on to a bill that AWC was supporting, and before I did so, I called OIR to make sure that everything was in line because as Councilmember, Council President Nelson was just mentioning, sometimes things happen very quickly and we don't know it because we don't have the app. I don't think there's an app yet, maybe one day. That's a really long intro into my question. I believe the, the bill was SB 7, 5770 regarding the arbitrary 1% cap on annual property tax increases. I was wondering, Samir or Anna, if you could give us just a very brief background on where is this bill coming from, why is it out there, and what's the current status?
So this is a bill that we talked about a little bit in our initial briefing, I think in week one, which would lift a, the property cap, property tax levy lid lift, which is currently capped at 1% a year. It would lift it to a max of 3% a year. And the primary driver has been King County, and that they were there seeing a budget shortfall and they rely heavily on, on the property tax. And without this bill, they, what they've been saying is that they would have to make cuts. A lot of other cities across the state also rely quite heavily, more heavily than we do on property tax, and so that's why AWC as a whole is very supportive of the bill. And it is a fiscal bill, a revenue bill, meaning those bills are not subject to cutoff, and so you'll see it, it hasn't moved yet, and you very likely will not move by next Monday because there's other bills that would take precedence, but this is a bill that very likely will be, it will be in conversation for, for much of this session.
That's, that's great, Samir. Thank you for that update. I'm, I realize I had a couple more comments, so then I'll just share them right now and then I'll stop. That to say, colleagues, myself and Councilmember Morales are going to be in Olympia next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, for Association of Washington Cities and City Advocacy Days. And so if there are issues that you want me to lobby on or not, feel free to share with me. And then also to the OIR team, if there are specific people you want me to talk to or meet with, let me know, and I'm happy to try to get those meetings on the calendar so that we can, because I know legislators run their life in 15-minute increments, and if you're not on the calendar, you're not getting time. Thank you, team. That's all I have.
Councilmember Kettle?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, Director Tarleton, thank you for coming and for the briefing, Samir and Anna, really appreciate it very much. My question is related to Senate Bill 6231, which is under general government, but it's also really a public safety consideration too. So, and my first reading of it, there doesn't seem to be any accommodation or any, no public safety considerations being, you know, able to be taken account related to the subject of the bill, which is a public safety concern. So I'd just like to flag that for you and my interests and the committee's interests in that bill because it is a bit of a dual general government slash public safety.
Very good.
Thank you.
I second that. I mean, I noticed that and I would like, I'll have to read that. I need more information about that, so, and what the play is, because I know that the city is concerned about also what their margin of ability is to address in general our crisis. I have a question about, let's see, two bills, and I think that it's going to be quick. First of all, Senate Bill 6242, it's under Public Safety and Criminal Justice, Senator Mullet's bill. That would save us, is there any, did, obviously it depends on how many recruits we get, how much money we would save, but is there any analysis for how, what the economic benefit to Seattle would be for that one?
I don't have any specific analysis for the city, but I can inquire with the CBO or Finance to see about that information and get back to you.
Or I could just do some multiplication all by myself and find out how much it costs and then figure out what that number is. Okay, well, I, that, any little bit helps, and so that would be great. And then the one that is related to, okay, hold on a second. Senate Bill 6276, under climate and environment, this is the, established the Right to Repair Act. Is this pretty much the same as it was last year? Were there any changes made? Because I know that there were some intellectual property concerns last year. I don't know if those were addressed or not.
Samir, I'm, Anna, I wasn't sure if they revised anything from last year.
They did end up, yeah, this topic did come up last session, you're, you're correct. I do know that they dropped new versions of the bill. I'm not quite sure what changed, but I can, I can check in with SPU and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
There has been a right to repair bill introduced in every session since 2014.
Oh.
It's a, it's a tough one.
So we're getting good at it, then. Practice makes perfect. Councilmember Morales?
Thank you. I have a question about, under the housing and homelessness, House Bill 2252. I did reach out to Samir about this earlier, but I'm really interested in the idea of support for neighborhood cafes, for really trying to increase neighborhood access to goods and services. And so I'm, I'm interested in this bill. I understand from Samir that there are some concerns about it, so I wonder if you could just talk a little bit about what those are and how we might help resolve them.
Yes. Yeah, I think the, the bill, in summary, would, would require neighborhood cafes in residential zones, but then also what the bill did was... zones, but then also what the bill did was establish maximums as to the size of them and establish, there's a list of maximum, like how much outdoor dining they can have, some prohibitions that, as we talked to some of our planning staff here in the city, they felt it was actually, potential was to actually constrain neighborhood cafes because it would, the better way as for a city is that we would like to, for the bill to establish a minimum and then the city to be able to have some flexibility for how we, how we allow and how to, how to neighborhood cafes. So, I think we support the intent of it. I just wanted it to be drafted a little bit better. And the bill was late last week, exact out of committee and seemed to make some changes that we're still reviewing, but seemed to make changes that were responsive to those concerns.
I'd be interested, depending on how those changes come out in supporting, so if you can just keep me apprised, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? All right, you know how to get in touch with our intrepid leaders of the, of the OIR team, so thank you very much for giving us an update.
Thank you, Councilmembers, Council President, and Samir and Anna, thank you.
All right, Item 4 on the agenda is signing of letters and proclamations. Today, there are no proclamations or letters to sign. I hear that there will be some coming up potentially in next week, so look forward to those. And then finally, moving on to Item 5, Preview of City Council Actions, Council and Regional Committees. We'll begin our next discussion, and the order of discussion is established by the rotated roll call for City Council Meetings, which is designated alphabetically by last name and with the Council President called last. This week's roll call begins with Councilmember Rivera. So, Councilmember Rivera, please begin and then pass it along to Councilmember Saka when you're done. Thanks.
Thank you, Council President. Our committee, we are, I'm setting up briefings with the three departments, or four, rather, that are under the committee to get an overview of their budgets. These are just preliminary briefings. And our first committee will be February 8th, and we are currently reviewing the agenda for that committee, so more to come on that next week, hopefully. And that is pretty much it for our, oh, sorry, one other thing. We're meeting with Council Central staff to talk about those, that particular committee, all the departments, and get an overview of anything legislatively that was left off from the last committees those departments sat on, and sort of moving forward if there's any legislation that was being contemplated up to this point, and getting a briefing that way in preparation for their sitting on now this current committee. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you. So, first off, listen, today I was asked by the family of Mubarak Sharif Adam, who is the victim in last week's gun violence incident at, directly across the street from Chief South International High School in West Seattle. And I was invited by, and specifically asked to attend a student-led protest at Chief South today at noon, organized by the sister of 15-year-old Mubarak. And it was a good opportunity for me to listen to the student-led concerns, the concerns to hear directly from the sister, the mother, the brother, and many other community leaders from our local Muslim and, you know, Horn of Africa community, and many others as well. And so, you know, I heard a number of things and been in touch with a number of stakeholders at SPD, at Seattle School Board, the local principal, and many others. But the students are demanding action and accountability, and which I definitely understand at a very high level. They want, the family wants answers. And yes, I stand with the family in this. Agreed families deserve answers, and I'm committed to doing what I can to make sure they, they have what they need and the information they need. They also want action on prevention measures. And, and I shared with them that this is a shared responsibility and shared opportunity, that there's things that the city can do from a city policy and resourcing perspective, and, you know, it's going to take all of us. But at a high level, I'll share, you know, they're, they're demanding cameras at the community center where this happened, which I'm told is a, which I understand is a Seattle facility and community center. There's no cameras there. They want tighter gun regulations. They want more security presence on campus. They are asking for metal detectors. The ninth graders are wanting to sit separately from, during lunches, from upperclassmen, amongst other things. So, it was a really important meeting and really important kind of consequential thing that happened in my district, coincidentally, but impacts the whole city. So, I just wanted to share that update with you all. In terms of the past week, there have been a number of things going on, of course. You know, we set out to help fill that vacancy, and I want to welcome Councilmember Wu to the dais here as a colleague. I was able to hire my final staff member, Heather Marks, who is a long-serving city staffer with deep knowledge of transportation and public safety. I think it's going to serve my office and my district well. And, you know, of course, the nitty-gritty stuff that matters the most, we're making sure we're being responsive to our constituents in District 1 and sharing information. So, punched out our, our fourth newsletter last week. I took a tour of a new water pump facility in SPU in South Park. And last week, also had the pleasure of speaking at the State of Soto Anniversary Event, which is in my district, and did that alongside Council President Nelson. Thank you for joining, as well as Mayor Harrow as well. I will say, there is a letter, a pending letter of support of HB 2058 and its companion bill in the Senate, SB 5964, concerning free school meals. I want to thank Councilmembers Rivera and Moore for signing on to that bill and support. There is a formal process that I want to, in the full spirit of collaboration, make sure everyone has the opportunity to, you know, review and approve and tweak the wording of that letter as, as you so see fit. So, more to come on that. And with respect to Transportation Committee, finally, next week, on the 6th, is when we're going to hold our, our very first meeting or of that, of that committee. So, finalizing the agenda now, so stay tuned, and more to come. Thank you. Adam, Council President?
Councilmember Saka, I have a question.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for attending the rally today and, and telling us about it. I did read an article in the West Seattle Blog, and I read the sisters, it answered the question, well, what are your demands? And then she, she wrote some of the things, and I, and she made it seem as though, I interpreted what the article was saying as, there are cameras, but they're broken.
Yes.
So, it, so is that the case?
So, that's my understanding as well. First off, I haven't read the blog coverage of that yet, but that is my understanding as well. There's cameras that are not functioning currently for some reason and evidently haven't functioned in years, which, you know, there, there might be an opportunity there, I'll say that, to learn more and make sure it's addressed, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, feedback? All right, Councilmember Strauss?
Thank you, Councilmember Saka. You took some of the same things that I said. I think we're going to be doing this for the rest of our lives. But welcoming Councilmember Wu to the first full meeting. You, this is your second meeting. The first meeting that you participated in, you weren't a councilmember at the beginning of it. So, just very excited to have you here for your full, first full meeting, and I look forward to partnering with you on a lot of different things. I don't have a lot of updates. I'll kind of give you, everyone, a brief overview of the committee this month. And again, next week, I'll be in Olympia for Association of Washington Cities Legislative Action Days. And so, for many of you, your committees that I sit on, I will be requesting to be excused. And you'll see tomorrow during full council, Councilmember Morales did this last week, at the end of full council, I will ask to be officially excused from full council tomorrow as well, for the following week. Our first meeting of the Finance Native Communities and Tribal Governance Committee will be held on February 21st, and we'll be focusing on the work plan of the committee for this coming year. We'll be diving deeper into the difference between the Select Budget Committee and the Finance and Native Communities Committee, which are different. So, the Finance Committee, five of us sit on, the Select Budget Committee, we all sit on. Just really want to drill this home because when we think collectively about taking up the budget, we are taking that up in the Select Budget Committee, which is different than the Finance Committee. We'll be looking at the schedule of meetings, when revenue projections come out, anticipated legislation, you know, the, there's three bills and there's a couple more that are tied between Select Committee and Finance, which are the mid-year supplemental budget, the Exceptions Ordinance, and Grants Acceptance Ordinances Quarterly. It is my desire to have Select Budget Committees earlier in the year than September. This has been done in the past, but I'd like to use this in a more robust fashion because of the challenging budget that we have coming up this year, because I would rather have a briefing with all nine of us in the room rather than just five of us and then asking for other members to get briefed when the rest of us just had a committee meeting. So, we'll be going through that. We'll be, part of this first Budget Committee or Finance and Native Communities Committee, we'll be understanding the departments who have fee-based services, who have, which departments are rate payers. These are the departments that we don't have a lot of toggle room with, so utilities and permitting, for instance. We'll be looking at the departments that have levies and restricted fund sources, whether it's for the library, the Metropolitan Parks District, families, education, and early learning, the transportation levy, the housing levy, and then looking at these fund sources like sweetened beverage tax and Jump Start. From that, we will then begin diving into understanding what our general funds fund, and that's where we have a bit more toggle room, understanding what labor contracts are still remaining unsigned, what have we been doing for the last six years, so that everyone can have a really solid baseline understanding of our budget, what's changed in the last few years, especially with single, we had a lot of one-time, one-time dollars from the federal government during the COVID. I don't even know if we call it the pandemic because it's still going on, but we're still back here, but during those two really intense years of, of COVID, under, so that each of you has a really solid baseline understanding, and then how to move forward from there. In that first committee, it's not just about budget. We will also be looking at the Native Communities and Tribal Governance portion of our work plan, overview of the last six years of work, where Office of Planning and Community Development had a report from about five years ago that went really in-depth into tribal history in our area. We'll look at the Office of Intergovernmental Relations, the department that Director Tarleton is in charge of, that tribal liaison position that was hired about a year, year and a half ago. How, what did it take to get that position, and what does that position do? We'll also look at our Indigenous Advisory Council that was really formalized in the last year or two that took a number of years of effort to get there. And then that all led to the Indigenous, the Tribal Nation Summit, the first ever Tribal Nation Summit that was held last year. And this is the committee that takes up all of that work. So, I'm really excited to giving everyone a really robust baseline understanding of the committee's work. And we had a little internal joke last year. It wouldn't be a council meeting if somebody didn't say robust. So, that one's for you, Deborah Juarez. Thank you, Council President. Any questions, colleagues?
I just have a, and just want to offer that we also have opportunity at briefings to have, to talk about some of the, the topics that you just listed, so that everybody can be present and it could obviate the necessity of scheduling a Select Budget Committee if it's hard to schedule everybody as well. So, that is another time that we can all be together in an open session and information, share and learn. Just wanted to.
Yes.
Yeah.
Happy to chat more.
Just also saying, budget is going to be the thing this year, and so, it's good that we're going to be building in a lot of opportunity for us all to learn and, and be able to make the right decisions.
Great. Well, no further questions?
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes, please.
Just one, one point of order, too. If you, if you use the word robust, you also have to use collaboration.
Collaboration.
Thank you.
We'll get it, we'll get a bingo game out of this by the end of the week. With that, honor to pass it over to Councilmember Wu.
Thank you. First off, I want to say thank you for, for councilmembers and for staff for such a smooth appointment process. I'm very thankful for your trust and your confidence, and we'll work hard going forward, and very thankful at how amazing everyone's been in helping me get set up and trying to find great candidates to interview. And just as Council President had said earlier in the meeting, the Sustainability City Light Arts and Culture Committee, first meeting this Friday, has been canceled. Our next meeting will be on the 16th. As I'm getting my office set up, I've attended a few events this past week with Councilmember Saka, a Councilmember Kettle, and Council President Nelson. We went to the India's First National Day Reception. I also attended the Organization Chinese Americans Lunar New Year Gala, as well as the United States Postal Service Year of the Dragon Stamp unveiling. And if there are no further questions, I will pass this over to Councilmember Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Councilmember Wu. I would like to echo my other colleagues in welcoming you to the dais, dais. I know it's a, no one, no, dais, dais, but welcome. My mom says, no one died, Joy, it's the dais. I have a couple updates. I'll go through the district updates first, and then I'll talk about committee updates. The first one, I attended the meet and greet with the East Precinct with Councilmember Kettle. We attended the Seattle Police Department, East Precinct. That went really, really well. We got to meet with the police officers and connect with them and kind of reestablish some of those relationships. It's really important being in District 3 in the East Precinct and knowing historically what that means to different communities and, and wanted to establish that relationship. So, that was, that went really well. The second is, I also had met with all the captain precincts at the Seattle Police Headquarters, so sat in for a meeting there last week as well, where I got to meet all the precinct captains and hear about some of the concerns and stuff going on with our police department staffing, a lot of the things that we've read in the articles or we've heard from constituents as well. So, that's important of establishing that relationship with our office, which is going to be important moving forward as a member of the Public Safety Committee. So, reestablishing relationships and connections. The third piece is, I'm hosting a community safety meeting on 23rd and Union. That's going to be on Tuesday, tomorrow, from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM. There's been a ton of gun violence going on up and down the 23rd corridor, and so, it's one of the meetings that the community has asked us to host so they understand what's been going on with our community, the safety situation, and then also being proactive, especially in that neighborhood. There are four apartment complexes that sits on 23rd and Union, so we'll be doing that for an hour. And then following that, I'll be going to the Garfield O'Day Game, which is senior night, which are both in our district, where they're going to retire, and I want to put this on the record, Ms. Loretta Williams' jersey, who is a phenomenal athlete in our community. She was around the Joyce, Joyce Walker era, and I don't know if my colleagues know, but she's a legend in Leshy. She coaches a lot of kids, youth in Leshy, and so, her jersey's being retired. Parks and Rec, last week, I attended their native tribes with the Park and Rec meeting, was asked by APDS and invited to come to that event, which was their first retreat, which is their, their first annual meeting where they're establishing relationships with our native tribes and our Parks Department and understanding the different areas and spaces and how to improve those and ensure that they're integrated with our tribes as well. Last, I went to the groundbreaking with our mayor, Pioneer Square and the Waterfront, which will enhance pedestrian safety, also bike lanes, and also unify the waterfront with Pioneer Square. It's, I think it's a great opportunity to create a lot of these, a lot of these spaces that create walkability and also pedestrian safety as well. So, that was great. Committee updates, parks, we will, so I'm the chair of Public Utilities, Parks, and Technology. Parks, we will, so I'm the Chair of Public Utilities, Parks and Technology. Our first meeting will be February 14th at 2:00 PM, Valentine's Day. I'll send out a lot of love that day to everyone who's coming to that meeting. We will be doing, talking about some technology with SPD, which is ShotSpotter, some other technology pieces on that, and then we'll also be going over a lot of Parks information and their legislation moving forward for the year, what's important to them as well, and then SPU, kind of getting an overview of what's coming down the pipeline for improvements there. I also have a meeting with AP Diaz, and a Seattle Center tour coming up this week, and then I will be meeting with the IT Department Heads as well. I had a meeting, Vice Chair of Transportation, with Councilmember Saka as our Chair, so I had a meeting with Director Spots today to hear about some of their projects. Really happy to hear that G Line is almost finished with their rapid ride, and so we're excited about that, but also know that Eastlake will be experiencing the same thing we're experiencing on Madison with the new J Line. So, understand that our office will be used as a communication tool with Eastlake to make sure that we're proactive, and we are ensuring that we're on time with our construction, and we listen to a lot of the small businesses that are along that corridor as well. So, just want to throw that out there, and I will pass it off to one of my favorite council members, Councilmember Kettle.
Thank you, Councilmember Hollingsworth, Council President, thank you. Starting off, from a district perspective, I had a very productive meeting with Deputy Mayor Washington and Unified Care Team, going over the different pieces of that, and plus how it relates to District Seven. Regarding the Public Safety Committee, as mentioned, oh, actually, let me start first with, welcome, Councilmember Wu. Really appreciate you joining us on the council. Thank you, and welcome. Back to the committee. As mentioned, we had a visit to the East Precinct. It was very good to do so at Rural Call, had a max number of officers available, two introductions plus Q and A session, it was really good. And the intention is, for my part, to work with my fellow councilmembers to go to the other precincts as well, in some type of combination, depending on which one, and I think that's very important to do so. So, thank you. Also related to the committee, had meetings with Chief Scoggins from Seattle Fire, Chief Smith from CARE, also with SPD's Chief Operating Officer Maxi, which was all great meetings, along with a, a visit to the Seattle Municipal Court with Presiding Judge Chess. And so, at this point, between informal and formal meetings, I've met with eight of nine elements of the Public Safety Committee, in terms of departments and the like. Also, since noted, really appreciated the opportunity to attend the Republic of India event last week, with the, the fact that we have a new consulate general here in Seattle, so very important. Upcoming meetings, obviously continuing our work with central staff on elements from graffiti to the, the various legal entities, and separately on SPD staffing. And one last note, back to Councilmember Strauss, yes, budget, very interested in the, you know, the public safety budget, so looking forward to working with you on that. And turn over to Councilmember Moore, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council President. Welcome, new, our newest councilmember, Councilmember Wu. So, just, I have a brief, a very brief update. Last week, I was able to attend the Crisis Care Center Implementation Briefing with members of the King County, who are working on that issue. It was very interesting, so there's a lot of work to be done in figuring out where, Seattle's most likely going to be, have a site, but the issue is where are we going to cite that? And I'm looking forward to discussions with the mayor's office about how we can collaborate to show the necessary jurisdictional support to get crisis care, and looking at where, which district would be most beneficial for the entirety of the city, and also looking at how we can make sure we get a youth facility housed as well. So, my office is very excited to be working on that. I did want to say thank you very much, Councilmember Strauss, for your methodical approach to looking at the budget. That had been one of my campaign issues, was being able to sort of get our arms around what the city is spending, and so, the approach that you've outlined here seems to be a very thoughtful way to begin doing that, so I appreciate that effort. And I think that's really about all I have to say. Thank you all very much.
Is it getting old yet? Welcome you formally to here, I, I mentioned that before, but good to see that end of the dais there, because that's where I used to sit, coincidentally. Oh, oh, sorry.
That's quite all right.
Okay, I, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Good afternoon, colleagues. First, my committee, the first Land Use Committee will be next Wednesday, February 7th at 2:00 PM. We'll have a discussion about legislation that I've been working on. Committee members should have received background information from my Policy Director Devon last week about our Connected Communities legislation, so if you have questions, please feel free to reach out to me or to Devon. We'll have an initial discussion on that legislation this week. We will have a public hearing at the following committee meeting in February, and then, my hope is that we can actually vote on the bill at the first Land Use Committee meeting in March. Last week, I met with a business owner in Columbia City to discuss some permitting issues that they are having. The station coffee shop is just about to open their second. He's a chain, it's very exciting, but they are struggling with some permitting issues, so we're trying to get that resolved, because the goal is for him to be able to open in time for Black History Month, and that is a goal I'm really hoping we're able to help with. I also met last week with the Southeast Network Safety Net, the Boys and Girls Club, to discuss the importance of violence prevention programs and intervention work that is happening. This is one of several organizations that are part of our Community Safety Initiative, so they're safety hubs in Districts Two and Three, and I think there's one in Del Ridge, but I need to confirm that. But it's very important work that several different community organizations have been doing to support with violence prevention and violence interruption work. Last week, my staff and I also met with U.S. Census Bureau Director Robert Santos, alongside members of PSRC, with county councilmembers, King County Assessors Office, and other state departments, to discuss outreach in our communities, particular communities of color in South King County, to make sure that their voices are heard and included in our census counts. My office also partnered with the Department of Neighborhoods and our SPD CSOs to distribute the CID Resource Guide in person throughout the neighborhood. This is something that my office has been working on for a couple of years now. We distributed over 600 copies of the Resource Guide to the library, to the community center, and other community hubs, like the Panama Hotel, Seattle Indian Center, and we'll be going out again this week to cover other spots. This is an important resource that we have helped create for the community. It's available in six different Asian languages, and is really intended to provide folks with kind of one, one place to look for assistance in referring people to services in the community. My staff attended the Cheryl Chow Street Renaming Ceremony over the weekend. I was not able to participate in that, because I had already committed to doing, working for Habitat for Humanity at South Park. That was fun. I only banged my thumb once with a hammer, but my office did work last year with Councilmember Chow's family to get the street renaming done, so I'm really happy that we were able to, to get that done, and to be there to help celebrate. And then finally, last week, I attended a groundbreaking of the MLK Family Housing and Early Learning Center. This is a six-story building just south of the Othello Light Rail Station. It'll provide 148 units of affordable housing for families, as well as the Early Learning Center that will be operated by the Refugee Women's Alliance. So, that's great, it's going to have six classrooms in it. There's over 400 people on the waiting list for this Early Learning Center, so they will be able to serve at least 100 families and provide accessible childcare there. So, I'm really excited about that. The building will include 29 studios, 74 one-bedrooms, 14 two-bedrooms, and 31 three-bedroom units, which is really important in the South End, because we have a lot of multi-generational families, and studios and ones are great, but they just don't serve everybody who needs housing. Housing will serve families and individuals at risk of displacement, who are earning between 50 and 60% of arremiting income. So, I'm really looking forward to this coming online, I think it should be done by 20, early 2025. So, that was last week. This week, on Wednesday, I'll be joining councilmembers from across the country for a joint press conference, calling on the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration to issue a recall of Kia and Hyundai models, which I'm sure everybody knows are really vulnerable to theft. So, what we, we passed a resolution last year, and what we learned, Councilmember Herbold passed the resolution, what we realized is that in many communities, it is communities of color who are suffering disproportionately from having their vehicles broken into and stolen, and this was technology that is, there is industry-standard theft prevention technology available in these models, but in some communities, that technology was not made available. And so, we passed a resolution last year, and this week, we will be having a press conference with folks from eight different cities, calling on the manufacturers to recall those cars. So, if folks are interested, I can let you know more about that press conference. I do want to give a shout out to folks at the Duamish Longhouse and Cultural Center, they celebrated their 15th anniversary of operation this past weekend, so congratulations to them. And finally, my team will be out of the office this Thursday and Friday. We have our annual strategic planning retreat, and so, we look forward to being back in touch with you, if you reach out early next week. That's all I have. Council President.
Apologies, I, I guess I'm a linear thinker, because I remember I-
That's quite all right.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, let me see here, as a reminder, the first meeting of the Governance, Accountability, and Economic Development Committee will be on February 8th, so that's a Wednesday, it's a Thursday at 2:00 PM, and as I said, we're still finalizing our agenda, but we'll be having a press, a presentation from the Office of Economic Development, going over their 2024 goals and work plans, specifically highlighting the investments last year's council passed for the future of Seattle economy, and where some of those investments have been going already. We will also have a briefing from Wayne Barnett, Director of the Ethics and Elections Commission in office, which has always been under the purview of the Governance Committee, but with accountability now in the name of this committee, it's especially relevant, or I'm especially curious, to hear about its lines of business and what it does beyond democracy voucher administration. Just kidding, you've probably met folks from the office, but also, the important work they do to, to maintain ethics amongst city employees, especially electeds. All right, so, last week, regarding my role as Economic Development Chair, I toured the Pioneer Square, invited by Lisa Howard, who is the Director of the Alliance for Pioneer Square Tainment, and I went on a walking tour, and we talked about parks and public spaces, and current projects, including the Office of the Waterfront's east and east-west pedestrian improvements. So, that was really interesting to get a bird's, not a bird's eye view, a street view of what's going on in the neighborhood. We also talked about various economic recovery efforts in the district, and, you know, there's some, some really good news about being on the net positive side of openings versus closings of small businesses, so it was, that was a good, it was a good walk and a good introduction of what's going on there. And then, last, right after that, we, I attended the Soto BIA's Annual State of Soto Event this year, so the Soto BIA is a business improvement area, and you'll probably be hearing about it more in the committee, I'll give an overview, or I'm not sure when the next renewal will be happening, but essentially, businesses or property owners tax themselves to generate revenue, to, to pay for essential or supplemental services in their neighborhoods. Anyway, this was their 10th anniversary, it was really great to see everything that they've accomplished, and I just have to warn you that if folks haven't met Erin Goodman, you certainly will soon, she's, she's really a powerful, effective person and advocate on behalf of the, of the neighborhood, and especially the businesses there. Would you say, yeah?
Amen.
Second that, yep. Erin, if you're listening, yes. As many of you know, so, moving on to, still talking about economic recovery and, and development, as many of you know, in November, in India opened a new consulate general, in, a new consulate here in the Seattle, in Seattle, covering nine U.S. states, and it's already been mentioned that some of us went to the reception, just some background, I do want to thank the mayor's office for all the legwork that they did. I didn't know how long the, the effort had been going to, to make Seattle the destination of the place that we, that, where this consulate finally landed. Apparently, we had stiff competition with Bellevue and other cities, and so, it was great to hear that we succeeded, and we attended the reception, which also coincided with the, with India's 75th Republic Day. So, it was a really good convergence of celebrating the new consulate, and also recognition of the 70th, 75th Republic Day. So, it was really interesting, and it, it seems so fitting now that there, of course, there should be a consulate here in Seattle, because there is a, a large and vibrant South Asian community here, and we all know that there, that we've got, we're a tech employment sector, and so, I, it's, I, one has to think, well, it's about time, so welcome. All right, that's all I've got from my, from my-
Council President.
-overview. Go ahead, yep.
I had a question, following back with Councilmember Saka, you'd mentioned a potential sign-on letter regarding Senate Bill 5964, are you going to be bringing that next week? I'd love to support you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Councilmember Strauss. Yes, everyone will have the opportunity, just want to follow the process, just, just so you know, it's currently in legal review, as I understand it.
Wonderful.
And then, everyone will have the opportunity to, but now that I know that you are supportive, and shameless plug, since you and Councilmember Morales are going to be there next week, please add this to your, you know, wish list of lobbying efforts on behalf of the City Council, in, in your conversations with our legislative colleagues at the state level next week. But, yeah, stay tuned, more to come. Thank you for co-signing this with me.
Yeah, I'd be happy to hand-deliver that letter to anyone who you want me to. And then, Council President, just a point of personal privilege, it's one of my best friend Mark's birthday today, so I just wanted to say happy birthday, Mark, I hope you and Liz get to have a nice dinner tonight away from the kids. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Mark. Okay, lastly, I'd like to mention that, speaking of budget, if you heard me being grilled on KOW by the, by the A-Team of three reporters, budget is on, on people's minds, and you're probably getting a lot of questions, and we really haven't had an opportunity to talk about what's going on, and the, the mayor issued a hiring freeze last week, and also direction to departments on how to prepare for, you know, the upcoming budget season, and get started early, and make sure, and, and build a budget that they can stand behind, so, to match the reality of our operating deficit. And so, next Monday, I've been working with Ben Noble, Central Staff Director, to just present a, basically, give a presentation on, on precisely what departments have been told, and provide a, a general roadmap of some of the decisions that they'll be making, and what their, what the executives' timing is on, as they approach the, the fall budget season, they have to do their budgets in the summer, and then, what the timeline for important decisions, policy decisions, that the council might be, that we need to be thinking about, so that it all flows together in a coherent way, to enable the best decision-making possible and stakeholdering that we might have to do. So, that will be on Monday, and I just wanted to highlight that we'll have OIR's presentation, and then this, this budget overview from Central Staff Director Noble. So, is that an old hand, Councilwoman Strauss?
Old hand, yep.
Okay.
Just noticing that.
All righty. Okay, if there is no other business, we'll adjourn. It is 3:12, and today's briefing is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody, see you tomorrow.